I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Hasler.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Einman.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderwoman Arndtster.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. Move for approval of the agenda.
May I?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Takes us to a personal appearance, Dina from the chambers here, you're up first.
Hello, everyone, I'm Dina Hasler with the Chamber of Commerce, I'm the Executive Director. I wanted to just give you an update on the license office because...
Normally they open.
Good question. We were actually set to open November 16th, but we are being protested.
Yes.
So, yeah, one of the entities that bid against us that lost is protesting 18 of their points. So with that, we're kind of delayed, and we have no timeframe. So really what we're kind of here tonight to see if you guys have any questions for us that we can maybe answer, and I know the community maybe wants some answers, and to offer a phone number so you guys can contact the DOR and ask them to politely move this along a lot quicker. We've been without an office since the end of February, and right now, looking at past P&Ls, it's taken like $65,000 out of our community in transactions. So that's pretty big. We're just asking for, the county has supported us and started making some phone calls, our state reps are on it, both the chamber board, the IDC board, we've called every day and basically they're like, "We know, we'll take your message," but it's every day, it's constant. So we just want to keep that rolling. I'm taking a lot of angry phone calls every day at the office, and I don't have answers for them, but we're working on it, so... We feel like the letters aren't being as efficient, so that's why we're calling. I can submit a phone number to Pam via email, and you guys can contact them directly that way.
That'd be awesome.
That's what the county commission's been doing. Dale Wright has been our advocate at the state level with the Office of Administration, and then also the DOR. So we're just asking, you know, you guys to support, stand behind us and support us in still moving forward, because if the chamber happens to lose this protest, the entities that bid against us, they're all from out of town, that money is not going to stay here. The people who are protesting us is License Office Services, and they actually live in Florida, so they don't even live in the state of Missouri. They keep a Missouri address, but they don't live here. So that's kind of the gist of it. We did get approval to move our location, so our location is going to be 753 St. Genevieve Drive. It was the old Radio Shack building, if you remember that. It's a wide-open floor plan, we're very excited about it. Our intentions are to create a professional office, obviously, but then hopefully to bring in the driver's license testing and have them be in the same building with us someday, I think, are they still here? No? Okay. We don't know where they're at. But just to kind of make it cohesive, they can do their testing and then just come over to our counter and get their services, and it's a one-stop shop, and they can be on their way. But it's also to bring that money back into our community and give it back to our community, whether it's grants or scholarships, anything like that. So the money will stay local with the chamber, it will also go back into St. Genevieve, whereas if it goes with anyone else, that money is going straight to the individuals, so...
Do you have a number you could give out for people that may be watching the meeting?
Yeah, I actually have it right here. I knew you were going to ask me that. So the person's name is Josh, and he can be reached at the Department of Revenue, it's And just tell him that you're a resident of St. Genevieve City or Cami, and that you're, you know, supporting the chamber in their efforts, and you hope that it's resolved quickly. We were told last week that it would be resolved this week, talked to Autumn this afternoon about 3:30, and she said they still have not come to a decision. So I don't expect it to be done by tomorrow.
Can you talk about any of the reasons for protest, or...
So basically, the way that it's even administered is through a point system, and so there was like a 205 points available total. And I think the chamber was 156.8 points is what we had, and then they had like 123. So some of their points that they're contesting was like the proximity to the location, they're saying they're within 100 miles, well, their home base is Jeff City, well, we all know that Jeff City is not more than 100 miles from us, so that was one thing they're contesting. The other thing was something with their office administrator, which is actually their own negligence, so they failed to provide information to the state, so the state docked them in points. So I don't know, I mean, they can only get 18 points based off of what the four areas they're protesting, that still only brings them to 141 points. So they're not even, they weren't even second place, they were last, they came in fifth place, according to the point system.
They're contesting their score, not yours?
Right. They're saying that the state did not issue them 18 points, that they felt like they were awarded.
So this has nothing to do with the chamber's ability to be able to run and manage that operation?
No.
This is basically...
They're not happy with their score.
Right. They're not happy with their score, that's correct. And looking at the RFP process, they applied for five different offices. This go-around, I think, Bonterre, Ava, and then there was a couple of other ones down around Springfield area, they lost all five, and so they're contesting all five. The problem is when, for us, if our office was still open, say Wayne and Kathy still were running it, if it was being contested, Wayne and Kathy could still operate until the new person would take over. But since our office has been closed, nobody can run it, so you can't reopen it under someone else's contract. So Gary, or not, what is his name, Wayne and Kathy are still listed as the contracted agents until we can actually get in there. We are in the middle of a transition, I mean, we had our employees were interviewed and hired, we hadn't made announcements yet, training was scheduled, background checks were scheduled, and everything. That happened on September 10th, and then we were notified on the 25th to stop all action.
How long does that contract last for?
Till August 2nd, 2025. It used to only be a three-year contract, now it's five. So... Any other questions I can answer, maybe?
Let me pull that...
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, ma'am.
So just know that the chamber is actively pursuing this, we're not backing down from them. We put too much work and effort into it, it's been a long six months, we've probably killed a couple trees in the process, I mean, my file is like this thick on this whole project, it's insane, so we're not, we're just not going to back down easily.
Thank you for all the work that you're doing.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Welcome. Any other questions I can answer? And if anybody in the community or any of you guys have questions later, just call me at the office, and I'll be able to answer as many of them as I can. But the one answer I can't give you is an opening date, that's the one thing I don't know, and that's what everyone's asking, so...
When you talk about lost revenue, though, you're talking about basically wages of the employees.
No, I'm just talking about general transactions. So every transaction that the license office would incur due on a daily basis, and that six-month timeframe has been about $65,000. That's not counting revenue that we would lost from Country Mart, or Oberlees, or any services that they would have had when they were here in town doing their licensing. That was just strictly transaction.
When a person buys a vehicle and they go in and pay the sales tax on the vehicle, that money still stays here, doesn't it?
Not if they don't do it locally.
And if they go to the Festus Lighting Company?
Right.
Mm-hmm. They'll pay, because they're a St. Jen resident, they'll pay sales tax on St. Jen, but the money will go to Festus, it won't come back to St. Jen.
They're just paying the price.
They're just paying the price.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
This is for our city administrator's report.
Item three. Full pall on my part. After finishing budget, we talked about vehicles we were going to buy, police department got into a rush of needing vehicles because they're behind by about six to eight months trying to make them, because of the shutdown for a while with the plants closed. So I went ahead and advised them to go ahead and order their vehicles, but didn't realize they needed to come back through here again, so you could approve purchasing the vehicles. The only ones that were available were the Ford Explorers, those SUVs, everything else has been locked or closed down by the state at this point. So we have the water department that needs to get a truck, do you want that brought as a resolution, or you want that brought as, so you can confirm it before we jump into ordering vehicles?
Wasn't the fire department getting a truck awful?
Yeah, yeah, but Kenny hasn't said anything to me about that yet. So, and we were spreading these out, the police department wasn't supposed to worry about this until January, but when we found out they were six to eight months out, it's like, well, we order in January, we're not going to get anything possibly till August. Then we're way past what I would want to, you know, try to get them in March or April, say. So that's why we went ahead and started moving forward on that.
We had talked about the comparison price between...
The few cars that are left and the SUVs, did we get that number?
That's the thing, is that there wasn't anything else left, everybody else has canceled what they had available, the Explorers were the only thing left. So then it would come out, we'd have to wait until probably later in 2021, if they came out with new models that they wanted to, that they're promoting, that they've now set up on their lines. So that's one of the problems we bumped into. I mean, at this point, if it's something you think we should hold off on, that we can probably call and cancel and say, you know, "Sorry, we'll reorder."
But I mean, is there word of new models, or is this just it?
This will be it till the end of the year, that we know of. Then usually it's the State Office of Administration that comes out with new numbers, late January, February, the chief's been on top of it, trying to figure out what's going on, that was one of his concerns that he brought into the office.
So do we have any that is in bad shape, that...
Yeah, we've got one right now that has no engine in it, yet completely rebuilt. They're covering that under the powertrain warranty, luckily, it's a 15, so it's right on the last edge of the powertrain warranty. Then the other two are exhibiting the same symptoms that that one is, that we think are going to end up failing the same way. So two of those would be the ones going out, and then we would still have one that has some potential issues. So we'll keep the one that is most serviceable and in the best shape when the time comes.
But the other two may not have it under the warranty, though.
And that's, we're checking on that to see what we can get covered, they won't cover it until a symptom happens, you know, so we're staying on top of that and just watching and making sure we can get under the wire if we can.
Chief, I don't want to belabor this, but can you explain the process of when we sell our vehicles? Do we have an opportunity to kind of make it known locally that we're selling them? Or do we go through an agency, or how does that work?
We have done both. We have listed them, advertised them to sell locally and taken bids in-house.
Okay.
We have taken them to auction to sell, we have put them on state auction sites, the, what is the...
Public Surplus.
Public Surplus, yeah, there's another, my Gov Deal, that's what it is.
And when we go and we do it locally, what is the medium that we communicate this to? How do we let people know it's out there for bid, or whatever?
And when we did it initially, I mean, it was really before we had Facebook or any of that, it was 12 years ago when I was here, or when I first started, but we'd advertise it in the local papers, so now, obviously, we'd have a lot more...
So we do local paper and Facebook?
We would do Facebook and local paper, and again, I'm not opposed to putting it on Gov Deals, we've gotten some good offers. The last cars that we sold, we actually sold to another police agency, kind of based on what Gov Deals prices were running.
Right.
But it was a local agency, a county over, that needed the cars, so we just tried to base it on what the going rate was, and that's how those were sold.
That's great, thank you, sir.
And that was also with the bid process, but, from my understanding, advertisement.
I've just found out over the years, just putting a new motor in a car doesn't make it a new car.
No, no, there's still a lot of wear and tear in the transmission, and the seats, it's amazing how much wear and tear is inside the vehicle, too, so...
What vehicle is it?
It's the Toruses, the cars that we had.
And were you okay with the Explorer, right?
Yeah, and we're, so my understanding is the, basically all police package cars were put on the back burner of production for commercial vehicles, so that was some of the lag time. Some of that has been improved, which is going to alter when we actually order the cars, I think the prognosis has gotten a little better on that, so we're still going to try to shoot for that January timeframe, just to put it, you know, we're in the timeline of the budget that's been established, so...
But the model is not of a concern?
Again, we're...
Not ideal, but you're okay with it?
We're waiting for those answers.
Okay.
No, we're happy with the Explorers we've gotten, you know, most of it comes down to price for us, you know, as far as, you know, as long as the vehicle is what we need, you know, equipment-wise and space-wise, and obviously price-wise is where we went with the Drango last time, because there was a pretty substantial price hike on the Fords, well now there's been another price hike on the Dodge, so they're, they typically try to stay pretty competitive within themselves, so that's where it's going to come down to. But yes, the Explorer's a fine vehicle, and they seem to be holding up well.
So do you put those out for a competitive bid, when do you...
We buy them off state, state bid price, so the state contract does the pricing, and it gets us by our bid requirements, or, because they're doing the bidding.
It's like we need new cars.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, okay, so the issue also comes, do you want something formal, because Steve needs it one time, or do you want to just do a voice vote on approving and talk to the department head to see if they've looked at a number of models, and what looks best for them, if you have any questions? I don't want to bypass what this board must be able to do. It's worked different ways in different communities, if it's budgeted, then they've moved forward with it, because it's like, everybody said, "Get that vehicle." They didn't worry about the price, they figured the department head will find the best price, but some communities also want to approve that, and then approve, so in his case, will also be funding for it with the lease purchase, so that will come back before the board because of the contract requirements.
So you have the final say whether he buys a Cadillac or a Chevrolet?
Yes.
Right.
Or a Ferrari, I'll throw that in.
There you go.
Actually, not to take up too much more time, but I was talking to Sheriff yesterday, and Tesla is offering a police package now that's running about $40,000, where our patrol cars are running in the 30s, but I don't know that they've got all the votes worked and the space worked out for what we would need, but I would say in the future, that may be a viable option, at least for, they've apparently got some get-up-and-go, I've heard tell.
So that's an electric?
It's an electric car, yes.
And that'll be a price that you cannot get on the open market.
Right.
Like a lot of the prices that we see on these procurement vehicles, they really do price them well for the communities.
And I told him, even like the Tows, the Tahoe's a fine patrol vehicle, but the perception is it's a $75,000 car, even though that's not what our state bid price is, or what we would pay for it, the community looks at it like, "Oh, look at these guys driving around in $75,000 cars," even though that's not nearly what we're paying, but perception is reality sometimes, so I think the same would apply of a Tesla if we're all driving around in Teslas, we might have some questions to answer, but like everything, I mean, certainly we have it available and be transparent, but perception is reality.
It's just hard to believe that it's taken that long to get vehicles, and, you know, with that many people unemployed, 7.9%, they're still...
I think that factories took such a hit with workers all getting tested and slowing down the process and the production, so...
Well, I'm fine with us not having to vote on it again, I feel like we, during the budget process, we all agreed.
It's proof of budget, so...
We'll do it in-house, and then if there's funding that comes about, because you'll have to approve a check, then we can bring that to you. All right, item six, monthly sales and use tax reports are out, sales tax over $4,000 from last year, comparing the two, and then for the use tax, we're over $7,000 compared to last year, so we're still showing some good numbers, in good shape. I'll be participating in a community action planning workshop that's being conducted by the hospital, that'll be next Wednesday, so in the afternoon, I'll be on webinar or afternoon, so that's kind of what my afternoon will be. It's been interesting trying to answer questions on health, the health of the community, how to improve it, how to, what you can do offer, what can you give people. For us, it's the parks, it's the open spaces that we offer, sidewalks, it's connectivity, so it'll be good to participate. Any questions?
Number four.
No.
Wasn't there another parcel of property?
It was the water tower.
No, besides the water tower.
It was the welcome center. Welcome center and the water tower.
No, besides the welcome center and the water tower.
Are you thinking of the street over by the Valley Springs Park? Isn't that what, isn't that a property with?
No, I thought it was a parcel property somewhere.
So the levee has to have names changed, but that's a separate issue. From the city to get it from Funds for Progress was just the welcome center and the water tower. That's all I got.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, all.
Hello.
Got my report there. Didn't want to point out, we did interview, select, and offer a job to a building inspector, so he should start next week, as long as the remaining plan is aligned. Rental registrations went out last week, just point that out, it's something we do annually, so we send letters out to every landlord, put it in the paper for two weeks, and that's all been done. Planning and zoning meeting last night, special use permit that's listed there in your report passed, 503, so it'll come before you at the next meeting. The applicant may seek two readings at that meeting, but that, of course, will be up to you. That's about all I got, unless you have questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Kenny, Steiger's not here, any questions on the...
Good evening, you got my report? We gut the creek on Chadwell about 99% for me. We did start a little clearing on the sides of the road, we got by the entrance to the care center open, and started a little bit on the other side. Finished painting intersection, crosswalks, and yellow lines, painted soccer fields again, cut some more brush on North Fourth Street, moved the display cases and the couch, oh, I think that's not right, we moved the diorama into the welcome center. Burnt the brush out, got two sets of the bike racks installed, planted two trees on market, got a few potholes patched with cold patch, worked on the parking lot at Pinkley Park, and did some weed eating on some of the bigger ditches.
Did that parking lot, did you expand that some?
Yes, it's about twice as big as it was.
Oh, great. Plenty of parking for Saturday?
No, but...
A little more parking for Saturday?
Yeah, it's been unreal down there, on weekends at school, and there's a half-dozen cars parked on the streets, and people are loving it. The biggest thing they say is there's shade, they can sit there and watch the kids, and so it's been a good thing so far.
Great.
And dedication to Saturday morning at 10 o'clock, if anybody wants to be there, more the merrier.
Any more planning on any more pothole patching?
Yeah, we're going to start hitting truckloads and subdivisions and...
And on North Main, too, that strip that's on...
Did that yesterday. Got to do a little more after we rolled it out, railroad decided to come through with some heavier trucks than our roller, and left some red, so we're touching back out.
So Gary, if folks have potholes in brother houses, what should they do?
Call 3507, and leave it on the answering machine.
Thank you.
Pothole police.
Pothole police.
Paul Arnold texted me today from Special Roads, and says, "Kudos to your crew for getting the Little Rock Landing, the road opened up up there with the ditches up there." Appreciate it.
One of the projects going, what's the best guess as far as getting those things built back in?
The buck's been passed, no pun intended.
CE is the contractor on the go, Paving Pros is the company that's coming back in to do the patchwork. Actually started today on Cedar Lane, and I don't think they'll get Cedar Lane done this week, but I would think by midweek they would be done on Cedar Lane and on Ludbrook.
After you called me, I did go over there, and I talked to the guy, and I told him there needs to be a bus company there, and he said, "We'll take care of it. That bus comes up, we say we'll have it open for it." But I appreciate that, but I'm doing it.
We're not using the concrete anymore, this is blacktop.
Anything for you? Thank you. Toby?
We have my written report, leads off with the welcome center update, pretty much every day, it seems like there's something different going on down there, new exhibits moving in, things moving out, so the diorama is, they have the plexiglass around it and the canvas top back over the top of it, so it's pretty much completed. They also have been moving in an exhibit from French Colonial America to kind of an orientation exhibit for people visiting St. Genevieve, so if you haven't been down there, it's a lot different, and will look a little different next week, too, we're going to move some display cases out and make some room for some other things from National Park Service. Gary mentioned the bike racks that they put in, they've got them at Main Street Park and at the welcome center now. And then there are some fall events coming up, so on the 17th, we're going to have a free concert with Dennis Stromott from 5:00 to 7:00 PM on the back porch of the Jean Baptiste Vallée House, that's at the corner of Main and Market, that's using some funding from the Missouri Humanities Council. And also that weekend is the Night of the Werewolf that French Colonial America is going to have at their facility, which has a lot of activities to it, including lantern led tours of the Bolduc House, and some bonfires and storytelling outside. On the 24th, the Foundation for Restoration will have its deja vu spirit reunion in Memorial Cemetery, and also that weekend, the park board will have their Pumpkin Glow at Main Street Park, that'll include painting of pumpkins, carving of pumpkins, hot chocolate, marshmallows, all those kind of things, also all outdoors activities. So, does anyone have any questions on anything?
Toby, it's the advertising grant program, they've billed approximately 8,000 of the 62,000, is that meaning that's been billed, received, and reimbursed?
Yep, they've been billed and paid for, yeah, or submitted to Sue, and so a big chunk of that is about, is kicking in, it's the Facebook campaign, is about half of the funds are related to, they're doing a couple different types of advertising, one's a marketing campaign and a native advertising portion as well, and then a remarketing campaign where, you know, once you've clicked on it, you express some interest in St. Genevieve, they'll find a way to get some ads back to you to kind of remind you about it. We're also using it as the lead generation for an email list for a newsletter that we're going to be publishing on a regular basis, probably twice a month, to keep in contact with people. And I was just looking at the reach figures on that last couple days, so typically, we put something up on Facebook, we'll have a reach of 2,000 to 5,000 people in the course of a week, but with this campaign, it's hitting six figures, 100,000 people. But with this campaign, it's hitting six figures, 100,000 people that they're reaching. So it's done through a group called Madden Media, is managing it for us. And it's hopefully going to hit a lot of people and tell them about St. Genevieve.
I saw a Facebook ad yesterday, day before. I think I've seen it a couple of times and I was amazed at the number of comments.
Yeah.
So then you know people are seeing it.
Right, and interacting with it.
Yeah, yeah.
And if they comment it, it's going to reach their friends and kind of circle around that way, too, so.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thanks.
Very much. That takes us into our COVID discussion. We have Ms. Jeanette here from the Health Department, can update the board if there's anything you need to know. Well, we have a discussion every time we meet, so it'd be good to hear from you.
Thank you very much. First and foremost, I invited myself because I read the newspaper and saw that you all talk about COVID. And so I invited myself. I've called here and everything. The second thing I want to say is thank you for wearing a mask. Anyhow, I'm going to tell you the stats for today, and you may find them alarming. If you get on Facebook and everything, you can see them. We currently have eight new confirmed cases. We have a total of 266 cases in the community. We have 12 probable cases. Probable cases are those people who tested, who did not test, but they have symptoms. And then we have 35 active cases. That means actually people that have the COVID. Our nurses call those people on a daily basis, the 35 active cases and everything. So you say, why is the increase? Yesterday, Governor Parsons did a Zoom with all the healthcare departments and the administrators to say thanks for the hard work and everything. And currently, they're doing 125,000 tests a day in the state of Missouri. Prior to that, when this first started and everything, you know, they didn't have enough tests, et cetera. So that's one of the reasons. The other thing now, they're testing patients before they have surgery. Again, you're, we're not talking about just St. Genevieve, we're talking about the whole state of Missouri. So therefore, that's another reason for the increase. And so maybe the next question is, when are we going to have a vaccine? Part of that Zoom meeting yesterday was a Dr. Williams, and he said he does not see that we'd get a vaccine before May or June of 2021. And, you know, I've already talked to some people who said, if we have a vaccine, say in a month, they probably wouldn't take it. They'd be afraid to because it hasn't been approved. So, and then also, we are already getting information from the state about the vaccine, how it's to be stored, who it, who are some of the people that it needs to be given to and everything. These are all drafts. I really don't want to give you much figures or anything because, as you all know, the state, they can change their mind in a pretty fast timeframe and everything. And then in two weeks, we're going to get another update about the vaccine. Also, then Adam Crumbles, who's the deputy director, also stated that in a couple of weeks, we're going to get some new changes about the schools. What that is, I haven't the fogest idea, but, you know, if you invite me back again, maybe I'll be able to tell you. I hope everybody got their shopper bag and saw about a flu vaccine. When I leave here this evening, if there's two things that I want you all to know is wear a mask and get your flu shot. How very important that is. So then the next mantra that I'm going to work on is get your pneumonia shot. Because what we have seen is if patients are admitted because of the COVID, in all probability, it's because they end up with pneumonia. So getting a pneumonia shot is as important. And in fact, to the extent that we're thinking, once we feel that we've exhausted giving the flu vaccine and stuff, we want to go ahead and do pneumonia. And you'll be seeing that on the shopper's bag. That's going to be the next.
So that's not available yet, the pneumonia shot?
Oh, yeah.
Before it is?
Absolutely.
Through the Health Department, you can get a pneumonia shot.
Right, but you have to get a doctor's order. You have to just call your doctor, tell him you want a pneumonia shot. His nurse will fax a order to the Health Department. You call the Health Department, it'll be just like the flu. You come and they do the paperwork and everything and come out to your car and give you a shot. You don't have to get out of your car. And on the 15th, we're having a drive-through out at the fire department. The other thing, we will not turn anybody away if they can't pay for the flu. We take all insurance and we do all that. All you have to do is give us the information and the stuff. And we will not give the flu, we will not give the pneumonia shot the same day we do the flu shot. Some physician offices will, but we won't at the Health Department.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Is a flu shot, if you don't have insurance, how much does it cost?
What it'll cost us?
I mean, if I don't have insurance and I come and need a flu shot, how much will it cost?
For you, nothing.
I mean, though, if, not me, but somebody that doesn't have insurance. You'll cover it?
Oh, the high cost is 60 bucks.
Okay, that's, okay.
Now, that's for those people age 65 and older.
Right, okay.
And then also, people say, oh, I can't take the flu shot because I'm allergic to eggs. Well, we have an eggless shot that we can give.
Ma'am, when was this fire department drive-through you were talking about?
It's on the 15th.
15th.
15th. And this is the flu shot only?
Yes.
Thank you.
And it's from 1:00 to 5:30. Again, you won't have to get out of your car.
Thank you.
So.
You had talked about two different flu shots, 65 and older, is that still the multiple?
Yes. It's AB, AB.
Right.
Where the, let's see. Oh, I can't think of that middle one that is given for 18 up to, that's really the one that's also the eggless one also.
Right. And isn't the pneumonia shot, is that just one shot or two?
No, it's two.
Two?
Yes. And again, different doctors have different ideas about the span of time that you can get the two flu shots. They have a different idea about, some will give them both together, others will not. They want like maybe two weeks or a month separation.
Were you done giving your briefing? Are we open to questions?
Certainly.
Okay. I wanted to get two points of clarification here. Just to break down, you gave a metric of 266 cases active, but then on the tail end of that, so we had 266 active, 12 probable, but then you mentioned 35 active at the end.
I mean confirmed.
Confirmed.
I said total active, I meant total confirmed.
Okay, okay.
But from what date?
From yesterday.
I think what he's asking is that, is that since the pandemic started in March to now?
Yes.
Right.
Because if you all had gotten on Facebook, you know, we looked great. And you know, we still are. We've had one death. So.
And all those other people recovered. So everybody that, all those 265 cases.
Those are total confirmed cases that they were positive.
Yes.
They weren't necessarily sick, but they were positive and they had to be quarantined and all that good stuff.
So our case count, active case count is 35?
Yes.
Yes. Those are people that are actually ill. They may be in the hospital or they may be at home.
Okay. Okay. And the other question I have is, I think it's somewhat subjective. It's, I think it's going to be an emotional issue in the next, definitely in the next two or three weeks, probably after that. But in your mind, from a county perspective, how would we roll out a vaccine that was not approved? Would, is it possible somebody can, at some time in the future, before the state out in 2021, go get a vaccine that's not approved by?
I can't answer that.
Okay.
I can maybe research it and see.
Okay.
But I can't answer.
Well, I guess that's not the important thing to me, but to speculate on that is concerning. We don't have some kind of data or something to point at that that's a possibility.
I can only tell you the same, I got that information the same way probably all of you sitting in this room. You watch TV, you read the paper.
That's right.
Et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. No, just wanted a little bit more clarification on that point, so I'm on it.
Good.
Any other questions?
Could you clarify one thing that I've seen on social media that seems to be a point of contention? When you say a probable case, that is someone who has not been tested but is symptomatic and has had an exposure?
Well, they're, they have symptoms.
Okay.
They have symptoms.
And is that, are those probable cases, that's total probable cases, that's not, those may or may not be active cases?
That is right.
So you cannot subtract that, those cases from your 35 active cases?
No.
Okay, thank you. So that's total probable since the pandemic began?
Right.
I think there was a little confusion for a while on that, and I do appreciate all the information that the Health Department's getting out there and they're working, you all are working very hard to clear up all of the speculation, and I sincerely appreciate that.
You know, I've been around the block a lot. You're only as good as the people you surround yourself with. And I want to tell you, we have a wonderful nursing staff at that facility, so.
Well, thank you very much and thank your staff, please.
I love you.
And I.
And again, I'll come back. I go to the commissioners' meeting twice a week. You know, I have no problem coming here and updating you. I don't know, how often do you guys meet, or ladies, sorry?
Second and fourth, second and fourth Thursday.
Okay. I don't think you'd want me to see me every time you meet.
I don't know that that's true. I think it adds a lot of value. I appreciate it, I respect it.
And I really don't have a problem doing that. And if something comes up that I can't make it, I'll twist somebody's arm. I'll tell them that everybody wears a mask, so.
And I would say you're welcome to come and speak anytime.
Okay.
If you have relevant information or something you want to talk on.
And, and, you know, I'm hoping that in the weeks and months to come, we'll know more about the vaccine that is coming. So.
Thank you, Ms. Jeanette.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. On our COVID, in your package, we had, we decided on a proclamation that I will sign. You all read it, everything, we had some feedback on it. Good to go with that, we can sign that, get it out there. And everybody understanding, there will be trick or treating on the 31st, how they do it. I've had some people tell me that they're going to, some people are going to set tables up out in front of their house with individual bags, you know, so I think we go and have some responsibility, so yeah.
If we, Jeanette, if we were to send a copy of this proclamation to the Health Department, would you be able to help us get that information out?
Yes.
Thank you.
In fact, maybe I'll try and get it on the shopper bag if I get that. Toby, how soon do I have to have it?
You don't have it.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Any other discussions on the COVID? Any committee reports?
Everybody looks at me.
We're, we don't want to give us a committee report. We don't get anything for planning. Oh, we do, we had a meeting. Joe wasn't there, so there's none.
Gary and Toby kind of touched on two things I was just going to inform you about, the two events that we got coming up this month. The dedication ceremony on Saturday at 10:00 AM, not at Pinkley Park, to honor Dave Pinkley, but also thank the Grimmergers for their donation of the playground equipment. And then on the 24th, the pumpkin glow, outdoor event at Main Street Park, pumpkin carving, pumpkin painting, stations of B social distance, and masks will be encouraged for when they can't distance, so. That's about it.
Thank you very much. Very good, thank you. Very good. Takes us to the, was any public comments? That's real pets. Takes us to the consent agenda. Move through.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. There is no old business, so we're going to new business. Takes us to bill number 4388, the first reading of ordinance approving memorandum of agreement with Alliance Water Resources Incorporated and Missouri Corporation to modify the initial professional servicing agreement dated August 12, 2010.
Is that basically just the contract extension?
Yes.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Takes us to bill number 4389, ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve authorizing the Merit Winter into agreement with ND West Contracting Company of Pacific Missouri for the Washington Street retaining wall project, SC 20-1128, the amount of $58,190.
Motion to approve.
We have a discussion.
Do you have a discussion? We'll turn to that motion.
Thank you.
On our original contract with Cochrane Engineering, they gave us a ballpark figure. Does anybody recall what that, not what they came back, once they had the design?
Yeah, the original amount was less than what the, what the secondary amount was.
Right, wasn't it like 28,000?
For just the wall.
Right.
But when we discussed that, I also told the board, we probably doubled that number because we're going to be doing improvements to the street. That's what this includes, the street and all the other improvements up there.
Right, yeah, that was my other question, you know, it's, you know, we've got a dollar amount here, but not much information to go with it. What all did we get for $58,000 and stuff, so.
So it'll be replacement of the wall, there's three sections of street, or two sections of street that we're going to replace. We've got an area that we need to just patch. Curving, do curving along the edge, curving down to the corners and there isn't any water or extra water going into the neighbor's house. We want to make sure we protect that. And then the new fence that'll go up. We specified chain link vinyl. Neighbor across the street wants to see something nicer, so they're paying the difference for an upgraded fence, but that's their responsibility.
So will the trees go back and?
No, I don't think there's going to be enough room. They're going to move those to another location. They wanted to, again, the neighbor, two neighbors across the street wanted to see them used somewhere else, so said, can we dig them up? It's like, dig them, go. Keep alive, that's great.
I noticed citizens had replaced the pole right there, so everything that we're going to do is good with citizens and.
And that was why they put the new pole in, so that when we pull the old wall out and we're not damaging or disturbing that pole, it's now deeper in the ground and our wall will not interfere with it.
So they're tearing out the old wall in the contract and disposing of all that?
So taking down the fence, setting it aside, putting in the new wall, putting up the new fence, a little seed straw right there along the street.
And our homeowner has agreed that everything we're doing there is satisfactory?
Took the plans down to her and we got the revised plans, got signature on the plans, and she's good with it. I would like to get them, you know, get the contract signed, get them started before they start shutting down asphalt plants at the end of November. It should take a couple of weeks. It gives them some time to mobilize up there and get it done before the end of November.
But I mean, in the agreement, we don't have a timeframe that says they have to complete this project in so many days?
I think it's 60 days.
50 days?
60, 50.
And we require all the necessary payment performance bonds?
Yes, yeah. And the other thing about this, this is not a prevailing wage job because it's below 75,000, so that was one of the exceptions. Any other questions? I have one motion.
All second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion first?
Second.
I have a first and a second for a second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Second reading of bill number 4389, an ordinance the City of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with ND West Contracting Company of Pacific Missouri for the Washington Street Retaining Wall Project, SC 20/1128, in an amount of $58,190.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donahue?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Armpit?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no. Bill number 4389 now becomes ordinance 4310.
Thank you. Takes us to bill number 4390, an ordinance approving change order number one to the contract, the CE Contracting Incorporated of St. Genevieve, Missouri on the Water Main Improvements Project, 20-8099, in the amount of $17,263. No approval.
We'll find out.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Is there any other business? No other business, communications, I'll call this. It'll take a few minutes before we get into work session. We have five minutes. Go, five minutes.